And the order. Anyone wishing to give testimony before this board today, if you would, please stand and raise your right hand. I hereby affirm the testimony I give today to be the whole truth, so help me God, say I do.
Amen.
Thank you. We need to approve the minutes from the November 22 meeting. Do we have a motion?
No.
Have a motion for Mr. Skewell, a second by Mr. Remfro, to approve. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion will carry. I am going to open the floor up for public comment at the beginning of our meeting today. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to us about anything they want to talk to us about. We do ask if what you're here to talk about is part of our agenda, that you wait until we come to that particular case and we'll deal with it at that time. Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
My name is Perry, now live at 1,000 Murphy Line, Redmond, Tennessee. I just wanted to come up here and say I appreciate what you guys are doing and have done. I'm sure all of you are aware that Monday night, the no industrial park was denied and turned down by a pretty big vote, two to one. And I'm still a little emotional about all this, but had it not been for what you guys did back in June, we wouldn't have got the outcome we got. And I'm here for myself and my community telling you how much we appreciate what you guys did and that you guys got it right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak today? So being now, we'll close that public comment period and we'll move into old business. Christopher?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the first item on the old business is the site plan for 10-440 Central Pike with variances given by the Board of Zoning Appeals, and those variances are a front setback variance and a sewer variance for a commercial lot. And the board voted to accept the settlement with this particular case yesterday. And with that, the site plan meets all other commercial requirements. Staff can recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak on this case today? Mr. Dean?
Charlie Dean with Dean Design Group here representing the project. I think we've got everything ironed out, the architectural as well, from the last time we saw you guys, so happy to answer any questions if you have any, but requesting your approval, please.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else here wishing to speak on this case today? If not, I'll ask that we have any questions from our board? Okay, I will call for a motion.
Motion approved.
Have a motion for Mr. Thompson to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Turner. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, that motion will carry. Thank you, sir. We're ready for the re-subdivision, the Spinn Lake subdivision lots 18, 19, 24, and 25.
Yes, sir. This came to you last month. This was deferred due to a no-show from the applicant. Staff has tried to reach out to the applicant or the developer on this case multiple times. We have not received any feedback from them. And due to the 60-day time clock that state law requires on all plat, staff recommends denial without prejudice on this particular plat due to inability to reach the applicant.
If we deny that without any prejudice, Christopher, do they have to repay their fees?
No, sir. If you deny it without prejudice, they can come back free of charge. If it's a flat-out denial, they will have to repay the fees.
Okay. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak on this case today?
Is this a deferment, I'm sorry, for a period of time?
It was deferred last month. Planning Commission by state law has 60 days to make a decision on any plat that comes before them. If no decision is made, it is automatically approved within that 60-day period. This will prohibit that from happening in this case.
Do we have any other questions from our board? Do we have a motion? Move that we deny based on non-response. We have a motion to deny.
Second.
And it's from Mr. Remfro, a second by Mr. Noakes. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Should we add in without prejudice?
He didn't make that part of his motion. You didn't make without prejudice part of your motion.
I'll be glad to modify that, Mr. Chairman, if it's...
Well, that just keeps them from having to pay again if they come in. I'm going to. That's completely up to you, sir.
Yes, we'll modify that with without prejudice.
Let the record show the motion is to deny without prejudice. Mr. Noakes, do you still second that motion? Okay, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion will carry. Thank you. We're ready for the subdivision of the Johnson Living Trust property on Shop Springs Road.
Yes, sir. This is another, this would have been an administrative review. This plat was pulled apart separately and it was deferred from November due to questions of ownership. The plat overall meets requirements and staff can recommend approval of that. I do know that ownership is still in question. I'm going to let the applicant address that particular thing on this plat, but this one is another plat that will need to have an action from this board, or you can opt to take no action and come January 4th, it'll be automatically approved.
Okay. Do we have anyone here today wishing to speak on this case? Yes, sir, Mr. Warren.
I'm Jerry Warren with Warren and Togo Civil Engineering. We're here representing the Water and Wastewater Authority of Wilson County. The question as far as the ownership of the property, at this point in time, the authority has been negotiating with the property owner for some time. I know at least since probably September, October. Those discussions, there have been some differences in opinion as to value, what have you, which is not uncommon. So the authority has filed condemnation for the property. From my discussions with Mr. Bob Rochelle, the authority's attorney, that condemnation has been filed. It is scheduled to be heard on January the 7th. At that point, and I'm not an attorney, I'm an engineer, but at that point, the ownership will be transferred to the authority and the other issues as far as value, what have you, would be decided later.
Yes, sir.
In the court. That would transfer the ownership of the property. What we would request is that this board approve the plat subject to a copy of that document transferring the ownership of the property after the condemnation is final to the authority. At that point, the authority could sign the plat. No plat will be recorded, no plat will be submitted until that is finalized. So we would request that that approval be granted, and that's what we would ask for. If there's any questions on that, I will try to answer them. I can try to answer it from a technical standpoint. The director of the authority is here, Mr. Chris Luber, with me.
You're asking us to approve it subject...
Subject to.
...to taking possession of it after a combination hearing?
Yes, sir. But that is in process at this point.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Question, Mr. Chairman, is this the pumping station, something about a pumping station on this property? Are you acquiring all of that track or just a portion?
Mr. Skewell, let me answer that question. This property, no, will not be acquiring the entire property. This is acquiring a small piece, 70 feet deep by 110 feet long. We have located this pump station at what we believe to be the technically correct place to put the pump station, and it's on the, almost the farthest corner of the property. We were trying to get it as far away from the bulk of the property as we could and still meet the technical requirements as far as elevation and where it needed to be. So this is a 70 by 110-foot strip, so it's a very small piece. This is for a public improvement for the water system that's needed to address some concerns with pressure in that area. So it's for the overall public good for this plat.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Yes, sir?
My name's Ken Young. I live at 1221 Shop Springs Road, and I wanted to make sure that your counsel had a copy of the packet and everybody did. Okay, thank you. Last month, you voted to defer the Shop Springs pump station based on the advice of counsel, and this was because during that discussion, we all discovered that the purported applicant, the Water and Wastewater Authority, lacked any indication that the actual owner approved of the application. The Water Authority lacked a deed of ownership, a purchase contract, permission from the owner to speak on his behalf, permission from the owner to seek zoning changes. They don't have a court order of any kind. And I'll quote Mr. Jennings. "If you come before the planning commission, you either need to own the property or you have to give someone the authority to be speaking on your behalf." And I'm here to report that the Water and Wastewater Authority has cured none of those problems. Now, worse yet, since the last meeting, we discovered something even more basic than the flaws I just listed. And I want to draw your attention to the applicants, to the applications in the booklet. There's two of them. They're highlighted. Note that the person who signed the signature block as the owner or the owner's representative is neither the owner nor the owner's representative. I want to repeat that. The person who signed the signature block was not the owner or the owner's representative. Now, let's take a quick look at the timeline. If you'll notice, on October 24th, the Water Authority had a special meeting called to condemn the property. On the 5th of November, Chris Luber, the executive director, signed the plat as the owner. Then he signed the site plant as the owner. But it's not until January the 7th that there's a court date to hear the case. So what I'm saying is that because of this incurable defect, both submissions are invalid. And I want to be clear, I'm not asking for a deferral. I'm simply asking you to look at the signature blocks on both applications and consider whether it is proper for these applications to be considered at all. And you can imagine the chaos and legal issues if you let these move forward. Now, Mr. Jennings is a fantastic attorney, but I'm sure he'll agree with me that a court filing is not a court order. You don't win all your cases, and the Water Authority might not win this one, and we won't know until we're through with this trial. So I'll take any questions you've got. Basically, the wrong people have made these applications. The owner hasn't authorized it, and the owner's representative hasn't authorized it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jennings, would you like to weigh in on this?
I'll weigh in on whatever you want me to...
Well, I would appreciate a little guidance, please.
Okay, well, let's talk about condemnation. Condemnation is a process that is two-step. First step is done relatively quickly in a few days. Matter of fact, it probably would have been done quicker than January 7th and not the holidays intervening. But that is where the decision is made whether or not to vest the person or organization filing the condemnation with title to the property. Ninety, this is an estimate, but over 90% of the time that happens. And because the owner doesn't care or wishes it wasn't happening but doesn't resist it, the fight becomes on the second step on the price for what they're paying.
Yes, sir.
And that can be done in a later hearing, or does not have to be done until after the process is totally complete. In other words, the pump station would be built. So that's the condemnation. Now, what the gentleman has quoted here that I said is absolutely correct, and I've said it probably 10 or 12 times over my 35 years, that you know, you've got to be the owner or have the authority as a representative to do it. But I will tell you that it is not customary for this board to go behind somebody's signature. We take it at face value. It's not our job to investigate fights. It's just not. What comes before us is an action that we either approve, disapprove, defer, or let them withdraw. But we don't usually question that. Now, with Mr. Luber's signatures on there, I don't know whether he has the authority to own it or not to sign that, but we don't have any way to know that either way.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Does the Water Authority even need our approval of this plat to do what they have to do as a utility?
They do not. Now, there is case law out of Nashville from probably 30 years ago that said that, you know, one governmental organization can't tell another one what to do, basically. That's a great, not a great, that's a tremendous paraphrase, okay? But we have also customarily in this county done that pretty much as a courtesy so that people know. And I've often taken the position, perhaps not supported by the case I said, but how are we going to ask private individuals to come in here and get approval if we don't ask governmental agencies to do it? Now, I know the answer to that is governmental agencies have authority that they have to move quicker, and they do this for the public good and the common purpose, public purpose, all of that. So the simple answer to your question is no, but now that it's here, I think you've got to act on it.
Counselor, also a question?
Yes, sir.
If this is prefaced with upon approval of condemnation in the court system, jurisprudence, then the approval would be predicated on that?
It would be predicated upon that being followed through with on January the 7th.
And if it doesn't, then the yay vote would become nay or null and void.
If worded in the proper manner, that would put that one to rest and they'd have to start over.
So we're not held liable as a board for who signed that application?
We're not. We don't have an investigative arm to do that.
Not even...
We take people at their word when they sign something.
So it's not responsible for Chris either to do the investigation since that arm is not...
No, no.
I want to make sure that their office is also... In your opinion, Mike, let's say we approve this, the understanding that he says we're not, we just want it in place when we get approved, or is it illegal for us to do that? Does it, or does it enhance their position? Can somebody construe that by us approving this in advance of, it helps them in a legal position? Could someone make a case out of that, in your opinion?
I don't know.
Our affidavits...
You said a lot there, John. I don't know that it helps or hurts anybody's position. I will say that in my 35 years, we've never done it.
In advance, like that?
We've not done it in a condemnation thing. We've done many things in here where we approve subject to staff recommendations or minor technicalities. What we're saying is we're approving it as long as we work those minor technicalities out. But we do that a lot, but we've never done it, to my knowledge, in the context of condemnation.
In this magnitude, of this magnitude?
Well, in a condemnation case.
Yes.
Most of the time condemnation cases are pretty straightforward. Obviously, if there's one file, the property owner and the person condemning it have not come to an agreement, but both of them pretty much know when it gets in the court it's going to happen. It's rare that a condemnation does not get approved, as I say, the fight's over the money.
Yes. So this would be a precedent, in your opinion, sir?
I think it would be for a condemnation case, yes, sir. I don't know that I can tell you it's illegal to do it, no.
If it just came up and we didn't know anything about this, we probably would have approved it. Now we know what we know.
Yep.
It looks to me like it's more of an issue for the court as they decide the whole condemnation.
Yes, we're not involved in the condemnation at all. What I always strive to do for you folks or Board of Zoning Appeals and the State Department is keep them out of court as a defendant or a witness, so that's not what we do. But it's not illegal, I don't think, for you to do this, whether or not you want to do it. I mean, when does the planning commission meeting end?
17th of January.
So we're talking about 10 days, January 7th to January 17th?
Correct.
Why are we doing it today? Tell me again.
Well, the original submittal, that time clock starts from the original submittal, not when they went before the first planning commission. So they submitted to our office November 5th, I believe.
So it's 60 days from that?
It's 60 days from their submittal, and we can typically get two planning commission meetings in that 60-day time period, which that leads us till today, but 60 days runs out January 5th.
But the applicant could request deferral past the 60 days.
If the applicant requests deferral, that nullifies that, but the board, the board did the deferral last month.
And the applicant being the utility?
The applicant in this case would be the utility or the representative, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Warren.
It is the request of the authority that this be either approved or this board take no action. We're under, and I say we referring to the authority, they have some directives from TDEC that we're trying to meet, and those involve timeframes. If they request deferral, that presents things in a bad light, in my opinion, to TDEC. We are trying to move the process along, and I can assure you, there's no, I'm going to use one of them fancy words, a nefarious intent here. If I'm trying to hide anything, I'm about the most foolish person in the world because I'm standing in front of you asking for it. So I'll try to answer your questions. It is an odd situation.
The TDEC approval to finally get your final plans approved by TDEC?
Yes, sir.
I'm sure is contingent on you having the property. Is that accurate?
Well, the TDEC approval, the technical approval, is a separate issue, and that's in process as well. There's some minor, they've requested some minor corrections. I mean, to give you an idea of what minor means, one of them is, where's the heater going to be? Well, we're plugging it into the wall. So it's that sort of thing. So we expect that approval almost any time. So respectfully, we would appreciate that, any consideration.
Two questions and an observation. One is, you said that the authority was negotiating with the owner at the beginning of your presentation.
Yes, sir.
So the owner does exist, and you know who that is.
Yes, sir.
And they know who that is. So that's actually, it's not an unknown as it was first indicated. You actually know who the owner is.
No, sir. This has been going on, those discussions have been ongoing for some time.
Thank you for that clarity. The second thing is, though, the deferral we're talking about is not deferral of work, but deferral for this board because we can't request a deferral anymore. It'll happen regardless by January 5th. So the deferral that I think would be positive for you is this board makes no decisions. If you request a deferral, you can go beyond the January 5th, and then the court date's done. I don't think it would impede you to continue to work. Mr. Chairman, I may be incorrect in that, Mr. Counselor?
Well, I think you're probably right, but I think he clearly asked us to vote it up or down today.
The impression, what we're concerned with is the impression that TDEC would take if the authority said, requested to defer, because they have put certain timeframes on, and we're having, it's difficult to meet all those timeframes and order equipment and get all these approvals and try to have everything in place to do that.
But I think an up or down gives you, you're going to go anyway.
We would prefer an up or no action.
Which is the same thing in this application.
Basically, yes, sir.
So, and I think the idea is that you need to show in good faith to TDEC that you're moving forward with the process. Will a combination filing in the court not show that? I mean, that's your next original step, because that's what my question was. Why are you coming to me today if you don't have the property? What is the hurry? You said to me, well, it's because we've got to show TDEC that we're moving forward. So with that filing in the courts that you are condemning the property, is that not indication enough for them to, you are trying to do as fast as you can? That property was easily negotiated? This would be an easy call today?
Well, there's one word there that's not correct. Easily negotiated. I mean...
No, I mean, if they were willing to work...
Right.
...then this would be an easy process, but since they're not, this process would become harder.
Well, yeah, any discussion as far as value is easy if both parties agree.
Yes, I'm saying...
In this situation...
That's why you go into court.
Yes, to be perfectly candid, there's a pretty good difference.
But the lawsuit won't show TDEC that you're in good faith or trying to head in that direction?
I can't really address that part of it because I don't know. TDEC normally is looking at the technical issues as far as, does this pump work? Is it in the right place? Are our hydraulic calculations correct? Is the horsepower of the pump right? Those sorts of things. As far as this sort of issue, that's kind of, that's not necessarily something that they consider.
So is this issue today just a way to say, we're doing everything we can, we're trying to move forward?
Yes, sir.
Now, are we in this process of, well, we voted up or down. You could say, well, we went and we're still working on this.
Yes, sir. And our purpose in bringing this initially was to notify this board as a courtesy of the intent of the Water Authority, so...
Chris, do you want to speak to that, please?
Yeah, I mean, if we request deferral, the interpretation from TDEC on the regulatory compliance side, not the engineering side, is that for some reason we're delaying our implementation to resolve the notice of violation for low pressure on Shop Springs Road.
Even with the fact that, even if, based on the fact that you have half-file condemnation, does that not offset?
And yet you don't require our approval anyway.
They don't, TDEC doesn't necessarily understand that. And my question to Mike, my understanding is that, you know, we don't have to, we don't have to file for a site plan approval, but I thought we still had to get plat approval for the planning commission to sign the final plat. And when we take deed to the property, we reference that subdivision plat. Am I not correct?
We have always done that here, Chris, always that I can remember. And to my knowledge, what we're doing has not been tested in court, whether we're right or wrong, and I really don't want it to be this time. But at some point in time, we probably need a definitive answer.
So I understand the site...
I can give you a good answer.
Yeah, I just, my opinion was the site plan, okay, it's for informational stuff. My understanding from our attorneys is that we need to get the plat approved in order to take ownership of that subdivision lot.
You better take the advice of your attorney.
And that's why we're here, and we want it to move forward. We're under a notice of violation. I don't need any excuses for not proceeding forward. We got enough that's piling up from misinterpretation of information.
So the options in your mind, sorry, Mr. Chairman, but...
Go ahead, sir.
...in your mind is vote for it, and the next thing is a no vote. I mean, not a no vote, a non-vote, not a no vote, but a non-vote. Don't take any action. Those are the two options that we have, as I understand it. I want to back up one other thing. There is no doubt in my mind and anybody else in here that that is a very valuable project to the greater good of those folks out there. Low pressure out there has been a problem for a long time, and that was even before the growth we have experienced the last four or five years. There's no doubt what it can do for us. We're arguing or trying to get technicalities right here and legalities right here, is what I see. And back to what I said, either we voted in or we do not take action are the options, rather than a no vote. Is that the way you see it, Mike? Okay.
Yes, it is, and I'm sitting here thinking, and I'm sorry this may muddy the waters, but we might as well muddy them pretty good. Chris and Jerry, even if you get approval, you're asking for a conditional approval. How does that help you with TDEC? It's a contingent approval.
Contingent.
Which is...
Contingent on getting possession of the property.
What is one of the conditions of approval for plats anyway. So we don't feel like asking for anything exceptional, and I don't want to speak for Christopher from the planning standpoint, but that's generally my understanding when a plat is approved. Yeah, and again, I'm going to circle around to it. You're asking us to grant you something conditional. Contingent. Contingent, all right, we'll use your term probably better. Contingent, but still, you don't have anything until the court's order is entered, giving you ownership of that property.
Counselor, with a no vote, I'm just asking, because again, if...
Counselor, with a no vote, I'm just asking, because again, it's muddled. Can they still not approach Chris's office and submit the plat on contingent and say, as soon as I own this, I just want it in your records, and he can work on that?
We're back to that, whether or not it needs to come in front of y'all or not. And like I say, I really don't want to be in the middle of that, nor do I want to be in the middle of their fight. And I understand the common good, and I think Mr. Gill is absolutely right, but, you know, just, we didn't ask to be put in this, guys.
Is January...
Sometimes we have to deal with it.
I'm sorry. Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Is January a hearing day or a motion day?
Hearing day, that's the...
So, it is, and what court is it in? Chancery or circuit?
That's a good question, and I did not ask.
Likely chancery.
Probably chancery.
I would think so. I'd say it's going to get vetted pretty good by the judge, most likely.
I'm just a, I know there's nothing nefarious, and I want to say the minute, I know that he didn't do anything nefarious besides, I'm sure he did on advice of counsel. I don't feel good going forward with something. I know the judge is going to be here here in a few days, which is nothing derogatory against anybody, but there is a court date, it's a hearing date, there's going to be some decisions made in that courtroom, and I really kind of like Mr. Jennings, maybe we don't need to be in that conversation across there.
And if the, respectfully, I respect your opinion, in that situation, as I said, we would request an approval or no action. No action is an action, and no action allows, in my view, y'all are not taking the position one way or the other.
You're jumping through one of your hoops, so get it in front of everybody you can to get some ready.
I'm trying as hard as I can.
I got it.
And I'm a short fella, and he's a big guy.
If you would, Mr. Lake, you wanted to speak one more time, please? Let's make... Yes, sir.
I'd like everybody to turn to the timetable page, please. What the Water Authority is asking you to do is set a dangerous precedent to help bail them out of a mess they created on their own. If you start at the top, look at the dates. The violation was 5/14 of '24. 7/31 of '24, that was in July of this year, they acknowledged that they needed to purchase land or obtain an easement. They didn't file for condemnation until after the last meeting here, that was November 26th. So, I'm not sure, you know, I got a little bit confused too on what's being asked, motions, do nothing, vote it up, vote it down. But here's the thing, you know for sure with a 100% certainty that the owner has not asked for this subdivision, that the owner's representative has not asked for this subdivision. The only person that has asked for this subdivision is the executive director for the Water Authority. Now, if you move forward knowing that the owner of the property did not ask for the subdivision, it's hard for me to envision exactly, I mean, it's hard for me to get my head around that. We also know that the court date on the 7th, a court date is not a court order. And if you go back to the original reason that I'm here, that I was here last time, I'm here now, they don't have anything. They don't have one shred of document, nothing. They have nothing that indicates that the owner of that property is okay with any of this. They don't have anything from the court, they have nothing. And all they're wanting to do is cut the corners on this process. They've cut the corners at the Water Authority meeting by having the condemnation vote not published, and now they're wanting to cut the corners on signing a document that they're not, they're not supposed to sign it. I don't know how we get around those site applications when there's only two people that can sign that document, that is either the owner or the owner's representative. And I suppose you could contort some sort of motion to sort of pretend that that's not the case, but that's the case. There can only be two people sign that, the owner or the representative. And if you go forward, it's a dangerous precedent, and there is no telling what's going to come next. Who's going to, who's going to put in a site plan or plat without the owner's notification? Thank you for your time. I'll take any, I'll take any questions.
I'm going to make a couple of comments here. It may not help things at all, but I've sat here and listened to this now for two months. This group right here is being asked to be judges, and you're not judges. You're here, you're sitting as a board. And these fights that are going on need to be resolved in a room like this, but not with us as judges. Now, I'm going to ask the second question, and maybe I shouldn't, but does the owner of this property know this is going on? Yeah, somebody give me an answer on that, that's pretty critical. I want to hear from these guys.
So, we have been in negotiations with the owner, okay? And negotiations, you know, the appraisals are way out of line.
You know that y'all are here today seeking this.
I don't know about here today. He knows that we're in the filing for the condemnation.
Okay, the condemnation's separate from what we're doing.
Yes.
Has somebody authorized y'all to come up here and do this today?
I have not had a discussion with the property owner.
Makes it kind of easier.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
I make a motion and we take no action based on the fact that there is civil pending litigation as it relates to this very issue, which is what we would only do if there was a case civilly filed amongst us. So, this thing's got a hearing date in January, make a motion, we don't take any action, let the court conduct its business.
I don't know that we can make a motion to take no action. We either have to vote yes, is that accurate, Mike?
Yeah, you wouldn't, you would just move on to the next case. You're not making a motion to take no action, you're just going to...
Just call for a motion if there's none made, call for the next case.
Yes, sir. Yeah, you're not, you're not making a motion to take no action, that, that can't happen. You're just, you're going, yeah, you call for a motion, no motion will be made due to lack of emotion. You just move on to the next case and nothing happens.
I think you were right, Mike. Condemnation makes this moot. It's already in process. Whether or not it's approved yet or not is irrelevant to this board. It's just moot.
Christopher, I do have to ask, no, no action on our behalf is the equivalent to a yes?
In this case, yes. They can be equivalent to a no, depending on what's in front of you. Plats are a little different. A no action on this particular case will be equivalent to a yes come January 5th.
And we won't meet between now and then?
Correct. It'll be automatically approved as a plat per planning requirements.
I will draw my motion.
Does that sound reasonable to you?
Yes, I think you said that very early in this time. You don't do anything.
Mr. Chairman, I'm in support of our utilities 100%, but because of where we stand and where I think our counsel is going, I move no approval on this, this motion.
You move to deny the motion?
I do, sir.
Okay, do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second, I will call for another motion. And again, just for clarity, Christopher, no, no action on our behalf is the equivalent to a yes?
Come January 5th.
And does that set a precedence, Mr. Counselor?
I think over the years, there may have been a time or two we took no action.
There's been no action on rezonings.
And they don't have to come back up here, correct?
Not for the plat. This no motion will influence my comments on the next one, but for the plat, no, sir.
Again, I will call for a motion.
I'm going to try this again. My motion is to take no action at this time on this recommendation, on this issue.
You make that motion, the bottom line is, whether you make it or not, no action.
There's no need for a motion.
No need for a motion? Is that correct, Mr. Jennings? Okay, all right, we'll move on to the next case.
Okay, the, give me one second. Okay, the next case is the site plan for the Shop Springs Road booster pump. Just ignore the recommendations that are in front of you. Due to no action on the plat that is regarding this site plan, we do not have a tract of record at present that this site plan matches up with. So, due to that, staff would either, staff would recommend deferral until there is a tract of record that reflects where the site plan is going to go. So, it'd be a one-month deferral until the January meeting.
And this is the first time the plat's actually been in front of us, correct?
The, no, the site plan was here last month as well. It was deferred, but the site plan does not have that same 60-day constraint.
It doesn't have the timestamp to it?
No, sir. But as, at present, there's no plat that's been recorded nor approved that references the lot that this site plan is going to be upon.
Actually, but become recorded, it has come through here and get a positive recommendation.
Correct, or now, this, this site plan won't have a legal track that backs up with it until January 5th.
Means it can't be one, okay.
Correct. I don't have a way to recommend approval of this plat, because I don't have a lot.
I completely understand.
I don't have a lot that references it.
But will it be on the agenda in January?
Unless the applicant chooses to withdraw it here or in the interim.
Mr. Renfro.
Before a second is made, would we preface the, I'm asking my colleague, based on the outcome of the findings of the condemnation?
Well, we'll have those outcomes at that point.
Correct. So, we need to state that for the motion?
Not, not for a deferral.
I wouldn't think so. I mean, we'll have that if...
Then I second.
Just, just a flat.
You made the motion, Mr. Jennings.
Yes, I did.
We have a motion to defer till the January meeting, and we have a second by Mr. Renfro. All those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed, no. Mr. Turner voting, no, that motion will carry. Thank you. I'm sorry?
I have to ask for comment before you make a motion?
Discussion.
Discussion? We, I thought we had our discussions, I'm sorry. That is our standard method.
You didn't open up the, the site plan for public discussion.
I apologize, I am so sorry. If you would allow me, we do need to allow... Thank you, sir. Do we have a second? So, moves. All those in favor, vote aye. That's my, my apologies, Mr. Moore. Yes, sir.
No need to apologize to me, this is...
That's my mistake.
Obviously been a little bit more of a confusing issue than, than I would have liked this morning. Again, respectfully, since there was no action on the plat, we would request no action on the site plan, and I think that's my only comment. A deferral continues to kick the can down the road, and any deferral, in our opinion, puts the authority at a, at a bad position with TDEC.
Can I input on that?
Yes, sir.
The site plan is not under the same constraints as the plat, and since the utility district is considered as a quasi-governmental agency, the site plan doesn't technically have to be approved. You're doing that as a courtesy, so if you're, if they take no action on a site plan, that would, that would infer a denial, more or less. So, it would be, if you're wanting to go that route, it would probably be in your best interest to withdraw it completely, and then it will not come back in January at that point.
Appreciate your comments, so we would respectfully ask that this be withdrawn at this time.
Okay. An applicant has asked for this case to be withdrawn. Do we have a motion?
You don't make a...
We don't have to make a motion.
They just withdraw. Yeah, they can withdraw at any time.
It's withdrawn and we're done with it, correct, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. They withdrew it from the agenda, sir. Okay, we will move on to the new business now, Christopher?
Yes, I just have a question. Before we move on to new business, can you tell me who approved the minutes? Because I did not get that.
The original minutes?
The minutes from November.
I think it was Mr. Ash and Mr. Renfro.
Okay, thank you. And then, before we move on to new business, I have an email from First Industrial Realty Trust Group, which is the first case on the new business, requesting 90-day deferral until the March 21, 2025 Planning Commission meeting to rezone, request from R1 to C4 for the 35.89 acres located at 1113 Couchfield Pike, Wilson County Tax Map 138, parcel 39. You do have to approve the deferral, so that will need a motion, but they are requesting a three-month deferral to the March agenda.
Okay.
And this is the first rezoning case on your new business.
Okay, and they have asked for a 90-day deferral, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, that would be the March meeting?
The March meeting, yes, sir.
I will make a motion that we defer this case to the March meeting. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Renfro, all those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed, that motion will carry.
All right, the second item is a revised master plan amendment. Are you ready for comments on that?
Yes, sir, please.
Charlie Dean with Dean Design Group LLC, on behalf of Richard and Craig Cardwell, has submitted an application to amend the C2 PUD use table for the store, it all located at 2720 McCray Road, parcel 16 on the Wilson County Tax Map 137. The request will allow such uses as truck parking and box truck rental. Back and forth with the developer, this just needs to be amended to parking and box truck rental, because they're not limiting to tractor-trailer parking, they also want to utilize boat and RV parking on the site, so that use will just be parking and box truck rental as opposed to specifying truck parking.
That's what needs to be modified?
Yes, sir. This is a C2 PUD zone property that has a planned unit development overlay that was approved on December 17, 2018, with the sole use being mini storage. The applicant is proposing to add, to add parking and box truck rental to the use table to be allowed within the C2 PUD. Staff does feel that some of these uses can fit within the C2 PUD, but the majority of the proposed area is distribution or warehousing. Staff does not feel that the parking and truck, truck storage uses were the intent of the land use plan for this area. Long-term parking facilities are specifically listed as an industrial use in the Wilson County zoning ordinance and should be located in I-1 light industrial, I-2 heavy industrial districts, or perhaps a C2 zoning as a use on appeal. That's kind of what this process is in front of you today, in an area that has not been heavily established as warehousing and distribution. If the planning commission does choose to recommend approval of this master plan amendment, staff will recommend that increased screening requirements be made part of the motion when the site is to expand for the additional phases. That would not require them to do anything on the front end, but if they were to pave more or build any more structures on the site, that'll need to be addressed at the site plan phase.
Add some other points.
Yes, sir. Additional site plans will need to be approved by the planning commission prior to permits being issued on any structures on the property. The planning commission does, does have the option to approve some or all of the proposed uses if they see fit, but with the above being stated, the uses outlined in the zoning ordinance, staff cannot recommend approval of the request to amend the master plan.
Christopher, can you tell me what everything else up and down logistics is actually zoned?
With the exception to the rezoning that just passed in November at the county commission, it was all distribution warehouse with retail storefront.
So, everything in there is on the same thing, except for the modification we made to the other one?
Correct, yes, sir.
I just want to make sure on that, thank you. Mr. Dean.
Charlie Dean with Dean Design Group, here representing the Cardwells. This PUD originally came to you in 2019 for a storage use. At that time, we listed on the PUD the proposed uses. I was unclear, and I guess at the time, Christopher and I didn't hash out that boat and RV parking were not included in the storage use. Since day one, our, our site plan has included the language of boat and RV parking on the, on the PUD. That was what was approved. Christopher brought to my attention that, that parking that's not covered needs to, needs to come back for a parking use. That's why we're here. So, I think the, essentially, the way that this facility has been operating, you know, since 2019, or since the construction of it, is the way that we're asking to move forward, with the exception of just the potential to rent, you know, Penske or, you know, box trucks. So, we're here, I guess, really to clean up the language of all this. I understand that there's formats that Christopher has to have. I understand that there's formats that Christopher has to have, and, and plans that he has to adhere to for his recommendation. What we're here asking for is directly in line with what has been happening out there, although we obviously were operating slightly outside of the, the approved uses in this PUD. The Cardwells would, would, would accept any kind of screening requirements, no problem there. And I will just point out as well, this property was addressed on McCray Road, but it has no access on, on McCray Road. All the access has been provided through Logistics Drive. So this property reads off Logistics Drive, which of course is extremely industrial, as you guys know. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions that you have, but we'd request that your, that the PUD be amended to the after the uses.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Have any questions from our board?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir?
Took a trip out there, and I've got some questions for you, Mr. Charlie, but I want to tell my board members, colleagues, I went to the office yesterday to reduce the amount of time that I got to ask questions and talk to Christopher. So, one other question.
I did not reduce the amount of time he spoke to me.
True, that is true. Chris, the reason you're opposing this is a precedent because of the land use?
Correct, I do not feel the land use intent for this area was set for, this is more of a contractor's storage yard use is what the interpretation is, and I had the same recommendation on the, the one that went before you three months ago.
One we approved at, at the, right off Couchfield Pike.
And has this been done before, Mr. Chairman, prior to my tenure, that you can recall?
I, I would probably defer that, I would, I would answer yes, but I would defer that to Christopher.
What was that question?
Has this been done before, or is this the first time anything like this has been requested from?
For this site, yes, but no, there's master, there's, there was a master plan amendment that was approved at county commission last month. Master plan amendments happen.
We actually done one.
Very frequently, yes.
Couple of key points that he couldn't answer, that I'm hoping you can, based on your drawing set, and I hope that you probably have it in memory. There's a wetland conservation easement down there with a notice right off the side of the road. You're aware of that, that sign that's there where all the cat tails are in that, in that pond. You have designed a, two things. One is, on C1, you show a washout area in case you move forward with a plat for the concrete on the trucks, which is uphill basically from the creek, and that's on C1.0? Okay, I'm assuming for future construction and building.
Well, to, to be honest, what we did is we submitted the, since this was.
So this was a cut and paste, basically, back from?
Since this was a use, change only.
Yes, sir.
The, the boundaries and the, and the, the development was defined by the previous PUD. I submitted the same plans, changed the use.
So will the washout go there or not?
The washout had, was done back when it was originally constructed. I think that if future buildings or future concrete is done on the site, it'll probably come off of the, internally come off of the existing pavement that's on site.
The reason is because of that wet area that we're looking at. If you'll go to page, this, two more questions. If you go to page C1.2, you designed a filter berm. Is that for particulate only? And the reason I'm questioning is any kind of, if you move the concrete washout, it's moot, but you have a filter here right above that's not there, above the pond. And all it shows is a particulate filter, I think, on the left-hand side of the page? Just reviewing your drawings. So it has a flow output, does that go into the pond? It may not be something you can answer because you haven't drew.
Nothing goes in, nothing goes into.
So does this? So this becomes an outfall into your collection system? This filter?
That actually, which filter are you talking about?
Says filter berm, right above, and it's located right above where the pond is, at the road. It's supposed to go in there, it's not there. But I'm assuming that if you build.
No, no, that's, those are two different things. What you're seeing there is you're seeing a gavine basket inside the sediment basin. Sediment basin was constructed when the original detention pond was constructed.
And that, it's not coming back around again?
It won't.
Oh, okay.
Southeast part of the site.
Yeah.
Where the, where the detention pond was constructed with Phase 1. That, we constructed the pond fully in compliance with the entire site being developed, so the pond will not be disturbed moving forward. It's already been as-built and approved through county stormwater, so.
And?
No, no additional stormwater.
The reason I ask, Charlie, you and I actually were involved with Tashiba and some other things with us working, you know, we have that wetland behind where we had to dig through for the big water tower. Big, big thing with the, you know, EPA and all the stuff. And that, right there concerned me because of that pond, and you guys would be very close to that, so.
Essentially, the site drains south, and the pond is just kind of a, kind of odd, really, along, along the western side, will be discharging no water to the west, no, no water to that pond. And the, and the, and the buffer that is on that pond has been maintained.
Excellent. That's all the questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dean. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Any questions from our board? Any further questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Move we approve subject to staff recommendation.
We have a motion to approve subject staff recommendation.
I did not recommend that.
Well, staff, well, staff recommendation is, but he did say if we do approve it, to add the terminology truck parking and box rental to?
No, just parking and box rental.
Parking and box rental, I'm sorry.
Not limiting it to truck parking.
You're, you're not limiting.
Correct. It'll be, it's just parking and box truck rental, which would allow parking of the boats and RVs outside of covered slips.
And 18-wheelers?
The tractor, yeah, the tractor, and there is an interpretation that there could be some trailers, I'm probably going to try to not do that particular part of it, because then we're getting into a contractor's storage yard.
So the motion to approve their request would need to be worded add truck parking and box rental, box truck rental?
Parking and box truck.
I'm sorry, add truck parking and box truck.
No, just leave, leave truck off.
I'll get it right immediately. Okay, Mr. Jewell, would you like to try that again, sir?
I'll make it as you stated it.
Well, well, I think you need to make it as Christopher stated it, how about that?
It's just parking and box truck rental to add those uses to the ma, overall master plan.
Parking and box truck rental being added.
We have a mo, we have a motion, I'm sorry. Motion from Mr. Jewell?
Yeah, I guess.
Second from Mr. Ash, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have, Mr. Renfro will vote no, that motion will pass.
And that will be forwarded, that will be forwarded to the Wilson County Commission in January.
Thank you, sir.
January 20th, yeah, I think so.
We're now ready for site plans and plaits, Christopher?
Yes, sir. The site plan for the Kane Brake subdivision monument sign, this is for the Kane Brake development. There was originally two signs which, in your packet, for the original approval. One of those signs does not have a track that it's able to attach to, so the, the site plan has been amended to just the one sign accessing off of Devonshire Court. The applicant has submitted those revised site plans, and staff can recommend approval of the one sign. The second monument sign will come back before you when they have a track of record they can physically attach it to.
Take two lots.
See, what was the question?
Two, two, two different signs.
Well, there's, you're only approving one, the application's been amended to the one just off of Devonshire. There was one off Georgetown, but that road has not even been platted nor constructed yet.
Okay, anyone here wishing to speak on this case today? Yes, sir?
Michael Durham with Bozeman Signs, I represent Century Communities, I'm just here to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case? Any questions from our board?
Just to make sure it's for one sign?
One sign?
One sign on.
Yes, sir. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve from Mr. Renfro, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Turner? All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion will carry. Ready for the site plan for Quality RRC Incorporated, the building addition, 9210 Stewart's Ferry Pike?
Yes, sir. This site plan meets requirements, staff has been working with them, they meet all commercial requirements, and this site already has a super variance, so staff can recommend approval.
Okay, we have anyone here wishing to speak on this case today?
Yep, Chris Allen, the operations director, just here to answer any questions you guys might have on our shop addition.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion from Mr. Thompson to approve, second from Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, those opposed? Okay, that motion will carry unanimously. Ready for the preliminary for Solitude Subdivision?
Yes, sir, this is a preliminary for Solitude Subdivision. Plat meets requirements, staff can recommend approval. This is just revising the preliminary, they are adding phase lines to this development.
Is that the Underwood Road?
Say that again.
Is that the Underwood Road Stewart's Ferry Pike?
No, this is Stewart's Ferry Pike, and it's actually accessing off of Rhonda Drive. The development you're referring to is Early Estates.
Okay.
They are still working, if you want an update on them, I can give that, but.
No, 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 I, I'm just, I'm trying.
Mr. Chris, is a, the construction entrance would be off Stewart's?
There is a construction entrance proposed off of Stewart's Ferry Pike for this development, yes, sir.
You could out-of-the-neighborhood, right?
Yes.
This, this is right before you get to that one, where there's a communications tower right there on the front?
Yes, there's a, a, yeah, I don't know if it's communication, there's a utility something.
AT&T, okay. Okay, anyone here representing this case today?
Frank Horton with CPS Land, the development manager for the project, would be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak on this case today? Any questions from our board? Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion from Mr. Renfro to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Noakes, all those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That motion will carry. And we are now ready for the plaits for affirmation?
Hi, Mr. Chairman, I have three plaits for affirmation. The re-subdivision of the Candy and Kathy Beetle property at 4988 East Richmond Shop Road, being map 135 Parcel 1, and that's going to be two lots. The re-subdivision of the Elliott Development Lot, number three, on Harkreter Road, that is one lot, being map 100 Parcel 62.20, and the re-subdivision of the Oakland Estates Lot 6, which is one lot on Davis Road, being map 25 Parcel 17.09. All these can be approved with technical corrections.
Do we have any, anyone here wishing to speak on any of these cases today? Do we have any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Mr. Renfro, second by Mr. Turner, is that good? All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion will carry. Christopher, do you have anything else for us today, sir?
No, I'm done.
We do, Mayor Hutt though would like to speak to us today.
I would like to welcome Chris aboard, appreciate the job you did Monday night with us.
Thank you.
Wish this board a Merry Christmas. And in regards to Mr. Renfro's comments, Christopher, we appreciate your sacrifice.
He took some medicine afterwards, I think, so.
Anything else, sir?
Merry Christmas to everybody.
You too, sir. We will stand adjourned, thank you.